Good evening. Welcome to the study session on November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It's a little after six P M. City Council Chamber is one eleven East Maple. Mister City Manager, I will give it to you in a second. We do have one citizen's request, and that is from Lynn Baker to talk about the video contest. So Lynn, if you could come forward, and please state your name and address, please.
I am Lynn Baker. I live at one nine one one six East Nineteenth Street Court South. You know I'm from Independence if I have that address, and six four oh five seven. I'm here as a member of the Tourism Commission as well. That I'm the Chamber Representative, and travel in Independence, the Tourism Commission, the tourism industry needs some work. So I'm particularly excited about being able to get our famous, and maybe not so many famous people, to represent Independence in a video, and it needs to be updated. The past videos need to be updated. So I would like for you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's our last citizen's request. Mister City Manager, I'll turn it over to you on on Agenda Item Number One, General Obligation Bond Presentation.
Okay, Mister Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor said, my name is Zach Walker, the City Manager for the City of Independence. It's it's really exciting to be here tonight to be able to speak with you about what I believe is really a historic and transformational opportunity for our city. What we want to lay out for you tonight is what we believe to be an important conversation around investing in our community through the use of a general obligation bond. The plan that I'm going to share with you tonight has not just come out of thin air, though. It reflects decades of thoughtful community input. It reflects the bold and courageous leadership of this council, and it reflects the expertise of our professional city staff in their input. So I'm eager to share this vision with you here tonight to gain additional input from you, from our citizen stakeholders, from our community leaders, to help bring this vision into reality. So as we begin, the first place that I want to start with you is just a quick recap of how we got here. Earlier this year, the City Council adopted the Get Fit Independence Plan, which was our theme and focus for the year. It's composed of three areas of focus designed to improve the overall condition of Independence. It includes becoming more fit structurally, financially, and economically. We really have tremendous momentum in two of those areas, and we have an incredible opportunity before us in the third. So let's quickly recap. As an organization, we've made great strides towards building a better financial foundation. In the last few years, we've reduced the total number of tax increment financing projects by forty-four percent. In the last year, we've reduced the total amount of TIF debt by over eighty-two million dollars, or thirty-three percent decrease. We've also worked creatively to eliminate all general fund subsidies for tax increment financing projects, ensuring that our taxpayer dollars go to support basic services and not developers' bank accounts. Meanwhile, we've increased the general fund reserves by eleven percent. The list of accomplishments is long, and longer than I have for time for tonight, but we are standing on much stronger financial footing than we were just a few years ago. We also have tremendous momentum economically. Our progress is making headlines on a near-weekly basis. Nolan Road has been changed forever with the new Cargo Largo Campus, a sixty-five-million-dollar investment and five hundred jobs. After decades of talk, the Little Blue Valley is finally developing, spurred by the Eastgate Commerce Center, a billion-dollar investment that will build over ten million square feet of manufacturing space and creates thousands of new jobs. The Hub Shopping Center, a highly visible commercial corridor in our community, will be transformed thanks to a thirty-seven-million-dollar investment. Whoops, sorry. And other commercial projects like Freddy's, the Fifty-Fourth Street Grill, are also adding to our tax base in our community. The progress we're making is indeed historic and potentially life-altering for many of our community members. But to fully realize our potential as a city, we must also become structurally fit by investing in our public infrastructure. This infrastructure is used by everybody in our community. It's not to say that we haven't done a lot. For example, we've partnered with MoDOT on a thirty-million-dollar investment along Twenty-Four Highway and a three-million-dollar infrastructure project along Forty Highway. But as these pictures show, far too many of our roads, bridges, and sidewalks are inadequate and unusable by too many members of our community. I'm often asked, why does Independence not look like many of our surrounding cities? I've sometimes called this the Karen DeLucy question, because Councilmember DeLucy often asked me that very same question. The answer's complicated, and there is really no one reason for that. But there is one reason that lies within our grasp, and one that we can solve immediately if we so choose. Most of the cities that surround Independence, and many more across the state of Missouri, have used a financing tool called a general obligation bond, which I will refer to tonight as a GO bond. They've used this to invest in maintaining infrastructure in their communities. The examples you see listed here go well back into the eighties and nineties. These are just some of the most recent examples where these communities made conscientious decisions to invest in community growth and betterment. If we want to look like these other cities and have the quality of life afforded by these other cities and grow like these other cities, we have to invest in ourselves like these other cities. So what then is this general obligation bond that I speak of? Well, a GO bond is a financing tool authorized by state statute and the Missouri State Constitution. It allows taxing jurisdictions, in this case, the city, to borrow money to pay for capital projects. The city pays back the bond debt and interest through property taxes. One of the most advantageous uses of this tool is that it allows for us to finance projects in the lowest interest rate environment possible, meaning more money goes into actual projects and not in bank accounts. It's also advantageous in that this debt must be repaid within twenty years, meaning that it won't be spread out in perpetuity. And it is highly sought after in the bond market, as it is secured by the full faith, credit, and taxing power of the city. I want to address a couple of the questions that I received as I've started to talk more publicly about this issue. One concern is that, does the city have too much debt? The answer to that question is no. The city has a very manageable debt load. Our non-utility debt in this city is a hundred and thirty-two point six million dollars, which I would tell you is almost dangerously low. It's indicative of a city that is not investing in itself. We've been very responsible with the debt that we do have over the last several years, as our annual debt payments have decreased. In the last year, we paid off twenty-one million dollars of debt, and in the last five years, the total amount that we are spending on debt has decreased from twelve-and-a-half percent to just six point seven percent. I'm also asked if a general obligation bond will have a negative impact on the city's general fund, and that's a fair question, given that we often talk about the challenges with our general fund. But as I've demonstrated a moment ago, significant efforts are ongoing towards stabilizing the city's general fund. But to be direct, the general fund supports operations, and very few of the expenses go towards capital. In fact, by investing in our city and investing in our infrastructure through a general obligation bond, we can count on growing our tax base and therefore helping grow the revenues that support our general fund. So why are we talking about this issue now? Well, I would first argue that we have not just started talking about this issue, but tonight represents the latest milestone in a long conversation. But there are certain reasons why we feel like it is imperative to amplify this conversation. The city's deferred maintenance, which is the amount of total projects for which we have no funding source, currently exceeds one billion dollars. And the longer we wait to invest in our city, the more expensive it will become to address these issues. The cost of time is real. As you can see in this chart, over the last several years, costs for materials and components, both of which are essential investing in your infrastructure, have seen significant increases in the prices for both of those issues. By waiting further, we will risk facing increased project costs. We will face costly emergency repairs. We will face disruption to our city services. We will further redirect resources from preventative maintenance to replacement. And perhaps worst of all, we continue to give an impression that this is a community that doesn't care about itself. A negative perception is easily communicated when we have dilapidated and aging infrastructure. So knowing the full breadth and depth of the needs of our community, what then can we do to maximize our investment to do the greatest good for the greatest number of people over the long haul? While we do have a billion dollars in need, we're limited by state law and how much we can buy it off in any one sitting. As such, I'm proposing a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar plan that addresses the following citywide needs: seventy-five million dollars towards a new community center, fifty million dollars to address public buildings, sixty million for streets and infrastructure, or streets and overlay, bridges and culverts for fifteen million dollars, twenty million dollars for curbs and sidewalks, ten million dollars for our historic sites, and twenty million dollars toward park improvements. We believe that the proposed allocation is strategic and can deliver the greatest community impact for all. So let's talk about these categories in more detail. First is the Street Reconstruction Program. When it comes to street reconstruction, there are four different categories. Within those categories, we have four-hundred-and-thirty-million dollars of deferred maintenance. It's a complicated formula by which you measure street health and life called Pavement Condition Index. The images on this screen are of streets with a pavement condition index of fifty, which is approximately our citywide average right now. And you can see what a street that's average looks like right now. This investment of sixty million dollars would raise our citywide average by thirty points and would fix three-hundred-and-sixty-seven lane miles, which is twenty percent of the total lane miles maintained by the city. We're also proposing fifteen million dollars to address bridges and culverts. At this moment, we have four bridges in our city that are closed because they are unsafe to drive across. We have ten additional bridges that must be fixed within the next seven years or also face being closed. This plan allocates fifteen million to address those fourteen bridges, as well as replacing ninety-seven culverts in our inventory. If you're one of the residents who's impacted by one of these bridge closures, you know how problematic this is. It has a dramatic impact on public safety services, where seconds can make a difference of life or death. Having to close ten more bridges in the next seven years will only widen the magnitude of the problem and the number of citizens negatively impacted by our inaction. Simply put, we have to avoid costly, unplanned, and dangerous road and bridge closures. We're also proposing twenty million dollars towards curbs and sidewalks. Twenty million dollars would help us address sixty-six miles of new curbs or a hundred and seventy-five million dollars of sidewalks. The total need citywide is six-hundred-and-sixty-eight miles of new curbs and three-hundred-and-twenty-eight miles of sidewalks. This proposal would help us complete our sidewalks-to-schools program. This is especially important, as many of our school districts continue to face bus driver challenges, which has necessitated some changing in bus routes. This has required more children and families to walk to school, which will help us do our part to safely transport students back and forth from school every day. The program would also address the worst sections of curbs in our city, as well as crumbling medians in our commercial corridors. This also begins to transition the responsibility for curb maintenance off of homeowners, so curbs are done effectively, efficiently, and uniformly, thereby extending the useful life of our streets as well. Just to drive this point home a bit, these are curbs located in the southeast portion of Independence, and sidewalk on the left located in front of the mall on Thirty-Ninth Street. I think we all tend to stereotype and think that the worst curbs and sidewalks in our city are in western Independence, and certainly there are major issues in that area. But if this is considered the new part of town, just imagine what the curbs and sidewalks in our older part of town look like. We're proposing ten million dollars towards preservation of our historic sites. Preserving historic sites in Independence is important for several reasons, as they contribute to the cultural, social, and economic well-being of the community. This plan proposes ten million dollars towards addressing long-deferred maintenance at these sites to help ensure their viability for future generations to enjoy. We currently have an expansive scope in our park system, and far too many certainly to name here tonight. We're currently embarking on a new Parks Master Plan and believe that we should begin to focus on the quality of our parks rather than the quantity of our parks. This plan would invest twenty million dollars to take care of the remaining Priority One needs from the twenty-ten Parks Master Plan, thirteen years later. This plan includes, but is not limited to, projects such as addressing bike and pedestrian trails, updating playgrounds in our parks, and revitalizing many of our favorite community assets, like the Independence Athletic Complex and the George Owens Nature Park. Next, I want to talk to you about our public buildings. There are seventy-two city facilities, but we have three major facilities right here in our downtown that need immediate attention. Let's start by mentioning our City Hall. Our City Hall building was really never done right, and you can talk to some of the folks who've been around longer to hear the stories about that. But I can tell you today, this building is literally beginning to twist on itself, a phenomenon apparently known as structural creep. Recently, windows have started breaking in the ground floors of this building due to aforementioned structural creep. Engineers and architects have now determined that renovating the current City Hall is no longer an option. Our Sermon Center, which was built as the city's first power plant, was not intended to be a recreation center, though we have creatively adapted it for that purpose. It would take ten million dollars just to address the bare-bones issues like HVAC, roof leaking, uneven flooring, and water infiltration issues. The Animal Shelter, this was a joint venture between the city and Jackson County when it was built. The arrangement continues to be that Jackson County maintains and owns this facility, and the city operates it. It would probably be best for both parties in the long run for one entity to own and operate it, thereby allowing for ongoing investment in the facility itself. And then our Police Headquarters, also known as the Justice Center, we spoke about this a lot last year with the medical marijuana, or the recreational marijuana tax initiative. I don't think I'll belabor that point too much, except to say that architects and engineers have also now determined that renovation of this facility is no longer an option. The space is inadequate for today's policing needs, but the real immediate issue is water and sewer infiltration that threatens many of our core police functions. So let's take a closer look at some of these facilities. Let's start by talking about our Community Recreation Center. And to do so, we need to travel back to two thousand and two, when the Parks Master Plan that was completed recommended a new facility. And you can see on this slide that some of the features that our citizens said that they wanted. It's not hard to see why, as again, the Sermon Center was never built to be a recreation center, but instead a power plant. So while highly utilized, it lacks the modern amenities that many of our peer cities' community centers possess today. So this plan was done twenty-one years ago. It is now old enough to buy beer. It seems to me that it was pretty clear what the community was saying, but what did the city do instead? Another plan. This community has told us what it wants and what they will support. But as we gather here tonight, this facility that our community has told us they want does not exist. I believe it is long past time to deliver on this expectation, and that is why I am recommending seventy-five million dollars toward a new recreation complex. But let's be clear, this should be more than just a workout facility. Yes, it needs to address those needs. But I believe it should also be built as an asset that will draw people to Independence, and western Independence specifically. We all say that we're for the redevelopment of western Independence. Here's a chance to prove it. All around the Kansas City Metro and the Midwest region, communities are building facilities to attract youth sports markets. This is a regional competition, make no mistake about it, and it is an extremely lucrative industry. Independence is missing out on a goldmine of parents and kids and minivans who have multiple games over a weekend. That's a lot of downtime that is filled with eating in restaurants, shopping in stores, and maybe imbibeing in adult beverage. That's also a tremendous amount of room nights at our local hotels for teams traveling to Independence. So let me connect the dots of economic redevelopment for you here. Here's a look at some of the current economic impacts in Independence. We've been working with a firm on an economic impact analysis for the Independence Square. That study has found that approximately one-point-one million people visit the square annually. There are ninety-eight hundred unique visitors to City Hall each year, of which six-hundred-and-fifty lead to another visit on the square. So putting it in mathematical terms, City Hall drives one-half of one percent of the visits to businesses on the square. The reality is, more people visit the square to try great local beer, as you can see, eleven thousand three hundred people, than go to conduct business with the city. The area we sit in tonight is commanding a valuable corner of real estate that is not serving as an economic engine for our community. We need to wildly reimagine how we use our space for better outcomes for our residents. What did start as a facilities conversation has now transferred into an economic development conversation. Modern economic development starts with downtown redevelopment. Downtown is the heartbeat of any city, and a strong heart is needed to pump blood throughout the system. As we get, begin to experience this renaissance, we can fully expect to see the transformation spread to other key nodes in our city, like Fairmont, Inglewood, Forty Highway, Nolan Fashion Square, and the Thirty-Ninth Street Corridor. So how do we go about making better use of our space while addressing our facility needs? Let me show you how I think we accomplish both. When voters approved the three percent sales tax on marijuana last November, the immediate priority was on designing a new justice center to replace the police headquarters. But a prime example of the volatility in the construction market is the Justice Center. You see, back in two thousand and eighteen, we conducted a study that told us we needed to relocate our police to a new campus, sharing space with the Independence Utility Center at Twenty-Third and R.D. Myes. That study called for a new police campus totaling about a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet, which was then estimated to cost two-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars a square foot, or a total cost of thirty-seven-point-one million dollars. As we began to update the figures for this presentation, however, those costs have now tripled. In two thousand and twenty-three, we can now see that costs are expected to be six-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars a square foot, or a hundred and twenty million dollars, to build out the same plan from two thousand and eighteen. It's it's really not possible in good conscience to recommend that one-third of our total bonding capacity go toward one single project, knowing all the other needs that we have in our city. So we've gone back to the drawing board, and we've rethought our approach. We're serious about pursuing a plan thoughtfully, but also with a sense of urgency. So late last week, we issued an RFQ, Request for Qualifications, for a Space Needs Assessment and Concept Planning Services for the New Justice Center. That is calling for qualified firms who will update our current plan and space needs assessment and provide a site and concept planning services for this new Justice Center concept. This will be a critical step towards defining the needs to be addressed by a new Justice Center for our police department. So after months of research and outside-the-box thinking, my team and I believe we have developed what is an innovative solution to address our most urgent facility needs in a financially responsible manner, while also preparing our downtown for a transformational redevelopment process. Here's how that works. Knowing that our police need an immediate solution, and they are represented by the gold star here on your screen, we are proposing relocating the police to the current Independence Utility Center located at Twenty-Third and R.D. Myes Road. This takes forty-five thousand square feet off the table, meaning we can address the remaining police facility needs for one-third of the price tag. Our police will have the opportunity to move into an award-winning building that just now turned seven years old, and we, through this bond, build out the remaining facility needs on the vacant land at that site. The police benefit by having a consolidated campus in the geographic center of the city. To accommodate the Independence Utility Center, we are proposing to relocate those employees to the vacant office property located at I-70 and Little Blue Parkway. The city is in a position to lease-purchase this building for about eighty-nine dollars a square foot, which remember the construction cost, it's six-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars a square foot. So you could not build that building today for that price. The building was just renovated in two thousand and twenty, and there may be some additional opportunities at that site that would serve to create additional revenue streams for the city. In so doing, we've opened up a tremendous redevelopment opportunity for western Independence. Here's how the eastern side of the square looks today. You can see there are a lot of parking lots and antiquated buildings, all of which are tax-exempt and aren't generating economic activity for our historic business district or the neighborhoods around it. By relocating the police facility and closing the Sermon Center, we have opened up nine to eleven acres of available land within the downtown area. This is unheard of, and just by comparison, the proposed site for the new Royal Stadium in North Kansas City is nine acres. So that gives you a frame of reference of the development space we're working with here in just this corner of Independence. This screen right here is small for a reason, but it is powerful. This is the early concept from the city's master developer, led by the team at Copaken Brooks, for the redevelopment of downtown Independence. I draw everybody's eyes to the yellow box towards the bottom of the screen, where the master developer conceptually has already begun to evaluate building the community center at the site of the Police Headquarters Building right there, and then additional private investment in our other government-owned land areas right now. So just to recap, public buildings, a fifty-million-dollar plan that's broken out as follows: forty-two million dollars towards site acquisition and the rest of the police build-out for the consolidated Justice Center campus, five million dollars for the city to acquire the animal shelter and make the necessary improvements for a safe and humane experience for the animals that are currently housed there, and three million dollars to apply towards fix-it needs for some of the most pressing issues at our other city facilities. This plan has many benefits to it. By pursuing this plan, it frees up seventy-eight million dollars in police facility needs, which allows us to build the long-awaited community center. It consolidates public safety on one campus with police, dispatch, and municipal court. It takes a modern economic development approach to downtown redevelopment, which sparks additional redevelopment across western Independence. It consolidates facilities to improve customer service, particularly for the police function, and it eliminates as many as five facilities from ongoing operating and maintenance expenses. By consolidating facilities like police, we improve customer service, but also by having these new facilities, it helps us address employee recruitment and retention, particularly within the police department. So of the eighteen cities in Jackson County, only seven- So of the eighteen cities in Jackson County, only seven have a lower tax levy than Independence, and these include such places as Sibley, Buckner, Levesey, and Riverbend, and Lone Jack. When I came to Independence in two thousand and twelve, part of the economic development pitch was to tout that Independence didn't have any geo-bond debt, and therefore had one of the lowest tax levy rates in the metro. It didn't turn out that that was a beneficial tool, nor has it been all that effective as a strategy. We have the smallest population growth compared to these cities, in part because we are not investing in our public amenities. In fact, the U.S. Census Bureau reports that since two thousand twenty, Independence has the third-highest total population decline among cities in Missouri, trailing only Saint Louis and Saint Joseph for largest population loss. So everyone wants to know, what does it mean for them? And it's hard to create assumptions for all of our taxpayers, so we've tried to create some scenarios for the average taxpayer. So starting with some basic assumptions, we estimate that the median home value in Independence is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. By applying this proposed two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar package, you can see that the average home in Independence would absorb an additional twenty-two dollars and twenty-six cents each month for their property tax to pay for this bond. I've heard some folks ask about the differentiation, you know, because two-hundred to two-fifty is a big number. But as you can see on this slide, really for every twenty-five million dollars that you invest, you're talking about two to three dollars, two to three dollars each month extra. So we believe this is advantageous for both property owners, for the value that they will get, as well as the community. Now, as I said, two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars sounds like a lot, and that's because it is a lot. But let's break that down a little bit more and put it into further context. So for me, let's talk about some easy terms you can understand. I love QuickTrip, and judging by the lines I weighed in, so does everybody else. Let's use that as an example, then. If I decide to make just one stop at QuickTrip for snacks, and I get the family five classic pretzels, because I'm going to eat two, and five Big Q fountain drinks, I'll pay twenty-two dollars and forty-seven cents according to my QuickTrip app. If the voters of Independence opt for a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar bond, they will make a monthly payment of twenty-two dollars and twenty-six cents. For virtually the same price as that one QuickTrip stop each month, our community can have sidewalks for our kids to walk safely to school. We can have a rec center that brings people from all over the Midwest to visit Independence. We can preserve our historic sites for the next generation. We can have a police headquarters that is safe and sanitary for our public safety heroes to work in. We can have streets and bridges that are open and safe to drive on. It's a sacrifice, I don't grant you that, but I think it's worth it, and I think the benefits will last far longer than what a pretzel and a Diet Coke can give us. I see no need to make the opportunity unnecessarily hard on ourselves. So I want to talk about when potentially we put this in front of the voters. Under Missouri state law, the election cycle that is pursued dictates the voter approval threshold that must be achieved. These are always going to be sixty-six percent or fifty-seven percent voter approvals. It is never just a simple majority. So I would, of course, recommend looking at one that has a fifty-seven percent voter approval. And those elections come to us in April of each year, even or odd-numbered, in August or November. Based on the amount of work that I think we still have in front of us and the conversations we need to have with our community to fully understand their need and what they'll support, my recommendation is to look at April of two thousand twenty-five for this election. So in closing, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, the projects that we are proposing represent just a fraction of the needs that we have. But taken together, we believe they offer the greatest strategic investment and the most immediate return on investment for our community. We've also identified opportunities to address not just facility needs in our community, but more importantly, economic redevelopment needs that maximize our scarce resources in this community. We will be able to better serve our community, our employees, not just today, but for future generations as well. So with that, I will conclude my presentation, and I am happy to stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Great job, and I think I've seen this the fourth time, and it improves every time, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, so I'm, the city doesn't currently own the land at Twenty, Twenty-third Street, R.D. Mize, is that correct?
The the city owns it, but the land, I believe to the spirit of your question, council member, that that land was acquired by Independence Power and Light specifically. So acquired by the city, but by one specific department that, of course, has its standalone fund in the city.
So I guess my question is, if Independence Power and Light owns it, does the city then have to buy it from IPO?
Certainly represents a policy decision of the council, but that would be our recommendation to do so, to make that entity whole for the the purchase of the land that they they bought. That would be our recommendation, yes, sir.
Okay, so. So when the marijuana tax was passed, we kind of sold it as we would be building a new police department slash Justice Center. And now the idea is to move the police department in to a seven-year-old building. I'm not diminishing that building, okay? I'm sure the building is fine. Have you spoken with the police department and their leadership, and what are their opinions on that building? And will, can they make it work for their needs?
They can make it work for their needs. I think an important next step is this request for qualifications that I mentioned, that will go in and assess space needs, allocation needs, to figure out exactly what remaining issues need to be addressed in that building specifically, to make sure it is set up and functioning as a public safety facility. I I don't say this next thing to be cute or lighthearted. The opportunity to be outside of a building that's not leaking sewage on them is is pretty exciting for them.
I don't disagree. I just want to make sure that buildings.
Yep, and it's a, it's a great question, and I appreciate you asking it. So we certainly have some work to do in front of us to determine exactly what the setup and layout looks like. But in terms of being able to both move into a relatively new building and to also consolidate their operations on on one campus where the dispatch is already at, is extremely appealing, particularly from a, both a morale and an operational standpoint.
Okay, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Please proceed.
I'm going to follow on just some of the things that Councilmember Stewart brought up. So the nine-one-one call center is already there, and this would allow our campus to have a space that's at least close in proximity, not necessarily attached.
That's that's correct. Now, some of that would have to be, you know, through design and the space allocation needs that I'm referring to to figure out what setup works best. I mean, there are some things that you don't want separated from one another, you know. For example, with municipal court, you want to be careful with ingress and egress and things like that. So I don't want to, you know, tell you exactly what it's going to look like. But no, we don't anticipate, for example, dispatch physically being connected to these others, just consolidated on the same campus.
So I would imagine community members who are used to the police station being here are going to feel like they are losing something. But for the space that we have in the city, this is actually the geographic center of the city. So sending our police from that space makes a lot of sense. Do I understand that correctly?
You you understand that exactly right, and I would also take it one step further first to reaffirm your point. And that, when when others go back to review this, I would encourage you to look at the slide that had the the stars on them. By building at the Independence, you present site of the Independence Utility Center, you really are there at the geographic center of the city, so that when people are both, you know, as employees come to work, but also going out to do their job, you're much more centrally located, et cetera. I think it's also important to realize the nature of of policing today. Our police work off of what is known as proximity dispatching. Our officers are out patrolling, they're in their different areas of the community. Calls come in based on who is located in what part of the city. They are the ones that go and respond, so they are not sitting in a building, waiting for the call, running out to go solve crime. They are already out driving in their vehicles. That's why we've seen these mobile terminals, data terminals in their car, because these vehicles are their offices. Wherever that car is at is where that officer is working from at that exact moment in time.
So we take over the utility center, but we have additional land to be able to build adjunct facilities as we understand our planning. And I assume that the police will have a lot of input on designs, as they use that building, what it is that they actually need to make it the most functional.
Yeah, in in talking with with Chief Dustman, you know, I I share his his vision on this, and there's there's a couple of key stakeholders on this. Of course, the police department, not just the the command staff, but input from, you know, everybody who's impacted by this, to make sure these spaces meet their needs, that they're functional, that they help them not only do the job they're doing today, but hopefully work in a more efficient and effective manner as they relocate into these new facilities. We believe that community input is important on this. We work for the community, we need to know what the community thinks about this, what they will support, what they want to see in their police campus, so making sure we get buy-in and support from them as well. So so lots of important stakeholders that we still feel like need to be consulted before any final plans are approved.
And when we had some police station upgrades recently, one of the things you were trying to address was safety of the staff and safety of the inmates. So you're envisioning that this would have a place for us to have holding cells for people who are awaiting trial, so that they are in conjunctions, because right now, obviously, we bring people from a different building in here for court.
Yeah, when I was talking earlier, a moment ago, about, you know, ingress and egress, and how, you know, certain facilities should be connected to, you know, prevent the amount of times people have to enter outside with the public, that was the exact example I had in mind, making sure that our holding units are connected to our municipal court so that we don't have to transport folks across the street like we're doing right now, bring them into these public areas. We can limit the amount of times that they would come into contact with the public, and therefore improve their safety, the detention officer's safety, and the safety of the general public as well.
So this is an awful big ask for the city. My questions to you are, how are regular people going to be able to give their input? How are they going to be able to understand more about your proposal? Is there room for modification?
This did not come before the council, and it should not be taken as, you know, tablets coming down from the mountain. This is intended to be a concept. This council has laid out a bold vision. You asked us as staff to start to figure out how to chip into that billion-dollar deferred maintenance shortfall that we have. As I said, we tried to figure out how we can do that in a way that's financially responsible, but also does the most strategic good for the entirety of the community. That said, don't pretend that we had all the answers and that it's perfect. So what we need is public input. Make no mistake, getting to fifty-seven percent voter approval is not going to be easy. Raytown had an issue just a few years ago that came up twenty-eight votes short. So every vote is going to count on this issue. If we just try to throw a plan out there and say this is it, I'm not feeling good about that. What I will feel good about is that we have gone to the community, we've talked to them, we've got their input, we've figured out what they will support, what they won't support. So I think there's still a lot of room to edit these margins here and figure out how best to do that. I think that has to be diverse, because we have a diverse range of folks in our community. We are sending out our citizen satisfaction survey, and those of you that receive that, you will see there are questions on there about this, you know. Which of these categories would you support if the city was to propose a general obligation bond? We're specifically trying to get answers to help us fine-tune this. We're looking to set up mechanisms electronically through the city's website and other means to collect community input. And I don't think it's bad to get some kind of citizen stakeholder group together to start running these ideas through. One of the better plans that we have, that we still use today, is the downtown redevelopment plan. That was a a large group of citizens from all across the city, and I think that plan's effective five years later, because it represented a broad impact of citizens from all walks of life in our city. So I think if we target April of twenty-five, it will be mid-January when the council needs to vote to put that on the ballot. I think we should be using our time between November thirteenth and that, you know, mid-January, a year plus from now, to do these studies like I'm talking about, start to do these renderings of these different projects that we, if we decide on those. But most importantly, to engage the community by any means necessary to figure out what it is they truly want that will motivate them to support a plan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Just to, well, let's start. So to start with, this is the beginning tonight, and, you know, I think well done for you, well done for the staff so far. But as you've just acknowledged, there's a long way to go from here to put the details into the picture. So, you know, I appreciate, I just want to say that I appreciate the work done on the economic impact, in particular to the square area. I'm glad that you're already have issued a RFQ to begin to do work for the the space for the police. I would, just to piggyback on what Councilmember McCandless had to say, you know, I I would encourage you to, as quickly as possible, to begin to do either more RFQs or whatever we need to do to get citizen input on the details of all this, and and actually be able to pare down and say where, what sidewalks are we going to replace? What streets are we going to redo? What, you know, some of the the details, I mean, you may not be able to get every last one, I understand. But, you know, if we can say, we're going to, you know, we're going to build out so much, so far from each of the schools, though that sort of a thing, I think that kind of information is going to be really helpful, and it's going to be really important for us to get that input back from the citizens in a very well-thought-out way, so that we can understand exactly what they are willing to support versus what they're not willing to support. And so I I just think the sooner we can get that ball rolling, the better off we're going to be.
You you make excellent points. We've got a lot of work ahead of us, both in determining what the final allocations look like and for what types of use, but then, you know, continuing to work down to a level of specificity that helps identify more about what we propose so that the community can really hold us accountable to say, this is what you said you were going to do, and we're going to hold you accountable to do it, which I think is highly important. And then also to make sure that we fully understand the true cost of projects like the police station, et cetera. So lots of work ahead of us, but lots of exciting and transformational work ahead of us.
And just to be clear, it's not inconceivable that, you know, we could get into this and and the, you know, the the justice area with the municipal court and detention and all that. You know, we could maybe find a way to reduce that cost so we can increase something else, you know. And and so these numbers are, I think it's really important that the community understand, these numbers are not fixed at this point. They are very fluid, I think, in in a general way.
I appreciate you saying that. That that is highly important to know, that many of these costs represent educated guesses right now. A lot of them are done in consultation, either with our professional city staff, who have some knowledge of the going rate for different commodities and labor costs right now. They're also done in consultation with some agencies, for example, Lenexa and Grain Valley, who are both building new justice centers, so understanding their cost of construction. But what need we have will be driven by, you know, our own unique circumstances, which will then set up how much these projects truly cost. So these should not be looked at fixed costs at all, and I appreciate you making that point.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Other questions? Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Walker, what's our total bonding capacity?
Oh, that's a great question, Councilmember Hobart. So the bonding capacity is a product of your city's assessed valuation. So with our total citywide evaluation having just been set at approximately $1.9 billion, state law says that we can borrow a maximum of 20% of that amount. So it's around $380,000, plus or minus a few million. It's not at all good business practice to fully bond within your capacity because imagine some crises or emergency comes along and we need to be able to issue debt to address some issue, we would have no capacity to do that. So we want to leave ourselves a healthy margin to be able to do that. So even though it's 380 million, to answer your question, that's why we've left it below that threshold.
And how does this work? Let's say we go for the full $250 million, we'll say the citizens vote and pass it, then when does the clock start on that 20 years? How does that work?
Whenever the debt is issued and the cities that we have looked at, and Lord knows we have plenty of examples to look at, they do not issue all of that debt at once. They will prioritize certain projects. Maybe they'll do, in our case, the justice center and some of these, you know, bridges, the four bridges that are closed. And then they'll start to, so you don't want to issue all your debt at once because all of a sudden the hit to your taxpayers is going to be instantaneous. It's better to work your way through that slowly. And we come to, even though we've received the bonding authority from the voters, then we come to the council and ask, okay, now we're ready to issue another 20 million of our total debt that's been approved. And we ask, you know, tell you why we're asking for it, what the projects are for, and you guys would vote for it. So it's intended to be a monotonous process so that you don't hit your taxpayers all at once with a massive tax increase.
So it almost works like a line of credit?
It does. That's a great way to put it.
Okay. So, well, I did certainly see some projects for, that will keep Ms., Director Reynolds busy in municipal services. She has buildings all over town that are junk. What's the plan for that?
So I will confess, first of all, that as we started to work on this, I had no idea it's 72 buildings, and I'm eager to figure out what all 72 of those buildings are, if anybody's in the real estate market. But you're right, there are facilities that are in, you know, absolutely abysmal condition. Part of the benefit, of the many benefits of consolidating the water and sewer utilities with stormwater and with public works into the entity we now know as municipal services is we're able to achieve greater economies of scale than we were before. So right now, you've got a sewer maintenance facility, you've got a water maintenance facility, you've got a public works, central garage maintenance facility, Parks has their own maintenance facility. Part of our thinking on this is to begin to consolidate, like those examples I just gave, into a centralized maintenance facility that's, one, newer and safer for our employees to work in, more functional for them to work in, but also begins to eliminate some of the, frankly, the blight that we've created with our dilapidated facilities around the community. And that's but one example. There's many others, but I wanted to give you some insight into some of the thinking that we're trying to work through right now to figure out how to achieve economies of scale by consolidating operations into a singular facility.
It feels like with this amount of money that we should be able to meaningfully touch most areas, and in some way, most districts in our town. That's, I'm not recalling 2005 or '06 when we need to make sure everybody gets a project. That is not at all what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, you know, if people are, you know, going to be paying monthly property tax for the next, it'll be longer than 20 years because the projects will be phased. So if they're going to, if folks in this town are going to have, and agree to, debt service on their property for these projects, they do need to see some direct benefit.
I agree, and I, you know, I'll kind of connect your comments back to Councilmember Fears a minute ago. When we start to really kind of think about some of these projects, I know there's a lot of need citywide, I don't doubt that, but these have to be projects that have some measure of citywide benefit to the community, right? These need to be things that a lot of citizens are using because if everybody's paying for it, yeah, it's nice to feel like we're all in it together and we're supporting, but there is a certain element of, if I'm going to vote to increase my property tax, I need to feel like I'm getting some derived benefit from that, that some part of my life has improved because the way things existed yesterday are now different than they are today because we have this tool in place. And I share your passion for that very much.
I appreciate that. I want to ask you something. You know, we've suffered some population loss and apparently among the worst, among larger cities in the state, which is not good, that hurts our economic base, obviously. How has the lack of a tax like this or having such a low tax levy, has that affected our school district? I mean, does that affect the cash in their pocket or the support for that? Or does that more directly relate to the city finances?
If it's impacted the school district, I'm going to tell you it's been more indirect, and here's how. If perception of our city has not been good, or if companies have felt like they can't develop here because our infrastructure isn't sufficient to accommodate them, then those are opportunities that slip through our finger, which would have been new properties that would have been taxable in our city, which in turn would have helped the school district because they are so reliant on property tax. So if somebody has made a conscientious decision to not come here, either a housing developer or a new business or something like that, because real or perceived they don't think the city is ready for it, then that's where all taxing jurisdictions have suffered.
One other thing I want to ask, well, there's several other things. We'll keep going here for a moment.
Yeah, you're fine.
Fire department, we talk about public safety. How's the fire department doing in this? And I know we have an ongoing issue with this sort of AMR and emergency ambulance services. Is there a, does that fit into this? What do we think?
So again, I want to, big caveat, that this is very fluid, and this is the exact kind of things that need to get community input and community conversation. Going back to when this council assigned us this task to look at how do we start to bite into that billion dollars of deferred maintenance, and how do we make the city more structurally fit to keep up with the progress we've made economically and financially? We really, the lens that we applied was strategic impact. What's going to make this city stronger and better today than it is? The voters of Independence in November of '21 approved an increase in the fire sales tax from three-eighths of a cent to a half a cent. Their revenues have gone from approximately $3 to $4 million a year to $12 million a year. That is a number that will only continue to grow as the online sales tax further is implemented in our city and the waterfall through the use tax continues to accelerate the rate at which all of those sales taxes collect. That sales tax has a lot, I don't want to diminish it, has needs to it like equipment and helping with personnel, but as this council knows, a big priority for that is rebuilding, renovating, or building new fire stations in this city. I think it should be counted as a win and something that should be celebrated, that here is a problem that has been solved. Our voters saw a need, they saw a responsible, reasonable plan presented to them, and they resoundingly approved it. We have now onboarded a firm that's going to serve as our owner's rep, that's going to help guide and accelerate the construction associated with these fire stations. So the community's going to start to see those construction activities, and the fire department's going to start to see those construction activities. So I don't initially have something proposed in them because I, again, take it as a major success that our community has generously supported that increase to the tax to help solve that issue. Indirectly, and maybe not even so indirectly, I believe the fire department will benefit by having bridges that are open to drive across, roads that, you know, don't throw them out of the fire truck because they've hit a pothole. I think that is something that should be thought of when we're thinking of public safety. If you can't get the Webb Pierce fire truck there, then what good is it to you in your emergency situation?
Next up, Parks. In 1993, in college, I worked for Parks for a summer mowing parks. I drove a Kubota with a PTO behind it.
I've seen your work comp reports.
Actually, I got told I was doing too well and going too fast. I had to slow down. I mowed Bingham Wagner and Polly's Pop Park and the cemeteries and a number, Little Blue Valley Park out by the power plant, which, so it's sort of a known thing that we maybe have too many and too much space and too much to look after and too much that don't get used and we don't need. You mentioned quality over quantity. Are we taking a look at that?
Yes. The Parks staff is in the process now of evaluating proposals that were submitted by professional firms to update the Parks master plan. So as you saw in my presentation, the last one was done back in 2012, so, or 2010, pardon me, 2010. So we think we're long past due to take a look at that. They hopefully hear by, maybe even before the end of the year, we could have something in front of the council, certainly by the first of the year, to approve the recommended firm to do that Parks master plan. And a major focus of that plan is to look at all of those assets and figure out, you know, both geographically, but as well as utilization. What are the assets that we could really invest in and make better and stronger? And what are the assets that are not receiving as much utilization or are located so far remotely geographically that it's, you know, just not really feasible to continue and figure out ways to consolidate the number of assets we have, which will allow us to better care for and invest in those that we do and give our citizens a more meaningful experience at those parks and recreation facilities?
You mentioned that this building itself is not doing well structurally. You and your staff are, I presume, looking at options for that?
We are. We think the immediate priority, again, you know, just, it's not easy for this bond to be everything to everyone. We think the police facility and the recreational facility, because of the cumulative economic impact, but also the safety and sanitation issues for our policemen and women, make those the two priorities right now. But we are evaluating the best way to address those needs for this facility while also making sure we remain customer-oriented and serviceable to our community as well. So that's something we continue to juggle, and we've got quite a few ideas we're kicking around on that, just not 100% sure on those yet.
Sure, of course. I, well, I want to, like the mayor mentioned, you know, we've seen this, your presentation a number of times, and it has changed a bit, grown, I would say. And I really, this is headed in the right direction, in my opinion. The focus on economic development, you know, it's the one thing, we really don't talk about that enough. We've done some projects lately, some massive projects lately, certainly over the last 18 months, 16 months, and it's time that we start talking in those terms. You know, what do people say when they talk about Johnson County or they talk about Lee Summit? That's where the money is, right? And those are exactly the terms we need to start looking at in terms of these big projects. Now, not all our projects can be money revenue generating because we're a city and we provide services that don't generate revenue. But where they can and where they can support that, frankly, most of the time they should because that'll provide better quality for our existing folks and perspective, businesses and residents. So I am, I am, this by far is the best version of this. So thank you very much, Mr. Walker, and I'm sure your deputy, Mr. Norris, had a lot to do with this and the other staff. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I would also be remiss, everybody sitting up on that dais through those multiple presentations has provided input and commentary and feedback about, we should think about this, or this is a question we're going to get, or here's a better way to convey that. So thank you for the thoughtful commentary you have provided to help sharpen this message as well.
Anyone else, councilmember? Good, okay. Anyone else, other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I had one question. And Mr. City Manager, I apologize, I'm going to kind of put you on the spot here. So there's some in the community that would say that we haven't made good stewards of the money that we collect and their taxpayer dollars. So how can you assure the community this is being used, if they approve it in the right spot and the money isn't going to be used elsewhere and it's being used, what it's appropriated for?
First of all, based on the stringent requirements of the Missouri Constitution and the Missouri state law, what we say in those bonds, you know, that is what bondholders are going to be looking for. So this is a highly regulated financial entity and component that we have to follow through on because of those legal parameters. We have to come to the council to issue the debt, even though the voters have approved it, we have to come to you and ask. So whatever ends up on that final ballot, you all will be able to have that, just like the scorer's guide right next to it, and make sure that we're living up to what we said we were going to do in it. And the final thing, and this is less of a legal requirement, but just more practically speaking, it would be foolhardy to do so. Because if we want to continue this type of work like our peer cities have, and we want to continue investing in ourselves, the surest way to not do that is to lie to the voters and not follow through on it. So by honoring the promises and seeing through on it, I hope that will further build the trust between City Hall and the community so that we can someday go back and have a conversation with them about additional investments towards that billion dollars of deferred maintenance.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on our agenda, we've got a couple of heavy items here. So on our agenda, we got a couple of heavy items here. I would call them generational items. Presentation of DKMT, which will be coming next, used tragedies, strategic studies for IPL, which is going to be a generational decision we as a council, and more importantly, our community's going to make. The general obligation bond discussion is also another generational discussion that we're going to have now as, as a council and our community's going to make. Speaking specifically to the general obligation bond, I've been thinking about through the summer that we've had all these different meetings and stuff. And before I get too much into my diatribe, I want to say thanks to our community members who are here for this. I don't want this to go unnoticed that we have an Inglewood Arts Executive Director here, our Independent School Superintendent is here, Chamber of Commerce members are here, our Independent Square Association Executive Directors are here, Fairmont Community Executive Director is here. I mean, Chamber of Commerce Presidents here. I mean, this has not gone unnoticed, and thank you for, for taking, oh, and Rotarians, I don't want to forget the Rotarians out there. So this has not gone unnoticed, the heaviness and the seriousness, and also where our city's going to go into the future. So kind of reflecting over the summer and having conversations and, and looking at our DRCC report that came out in 2018, which, not to go into the history of it, because many of you and some of you sat on the committee and, and were in plenty of those meetings, that, that gave us a good tool, a good print to kind of get our thoughts, get all of our other 17 different plans together into one book, if you will. And within that, we have checked off quite a few things in that book. One of them was to form partnerships within our community, within our grassroots community. We have our ISA, our Inglewood Business Association. We have so many different communities reaching out and developing. Different funding mechanisms we've had. They asked in the report to talk about community improvement districts, alternative funding sources, so we don't have to spend our general obligation money, or general obligation money, or general revenues money for these things. They've asked to take a strong look to see how we can cost share. We've, we've done all of those things. The square has a CID, Inglewood has a community improvement district. We're getting ready to form up our 24 Highway Improvement District. Talked to Doug Cowan today at one of our meetings I had with Councilwoman McCandless. We're going to get that solid and get that moving next month. So we've taken all these steps. We've done the cost share. We've, we've done as much as we can now. Now it's time to take that next step, which is this here naturally. We need to do it cautiously, and we need to do it with that community engagement, which is going to be highly important to get that feedback, to understand the needs that our community has and also some of the stress they have. I mean, let's, let's not discount the fact that economic times are a little tough, and that's all across the board. So we have to take that into account. But I think it's also more important to understand that our community and our residents, they deserve to have that return on investment. If they're going to invest into the city they live in, we've got to guarantee that investment. And by planning the way we've done, we've looked at redevelopment on the square with our master planner to redevelop this. How do we bring tax money back in our city? Because we don't produce money, we don't sell anything to produce that income. So we have to provide a service, provide a space to where people will come and visit Harry Truman's town, do some stays on Independent Square, use the leverage that we've done on 24 Highway to make downtown Fairmont more vibrant again. So we're doing all those things, so that we've got to work on that. That return on investment's highly important to get there. Public engagement. But I would say a big thank you to your staff for putting this all together and working on it, and to the community members who, who also went to a lot of those meetings, that there is a cost for doing nothing. And if we do decide to do nothing, then there's going to be a cost, and that too will be generational. I'm excited to hear what this community engagement, to hear what my constituents have to say about it. Lot of discussions, lot of what ifs and maybes, so. But thank you for bringing us a plan that we can work on and talk about. We can still have time to talk with our, our union membership, our local 781, our Lodge Number One, talk to those folks and see what their needs are, get them on board because they're part of our community too that we need to have. So thank you for this. I'm looking for the community input. I think that's going to be one of the next stages that, that us as a council need to understand and listen to and work with our, our team that we have. We provide the direction, you provide the, the professional management and the services, and our constituents provide us the feedback to give to you. So thank you for everything you've been doing.
Thank you guys for your, your guidance and support as well. It's, it's a team effort.
Anyone else other, other questions? Again, Mr. Walker, you and your staff, great job, well done. I know this is a lot of work to get to this point. And, but also, Councilmember Perkins, to your point, this is not only brought to us by our staff, but there's a real desire by our citizens to say, we need to move forward on this, and it's been too long, and we really need to move forward. So we're hearing that for sure. I want to echo your concerns. I think the next thing we need to do, Mr. City Manager, is set up a robust schedule of listening sessions. We really do that on the front end here, really the next three months or so, to, to get all of us out there, listening constituents all over the city and our districts and finding out what people are, are doing and, and, you know, what's the plan for that. So I think that's one of our next steps in my mind, to do that. I know when people talk about an investment like this or coming to a city, when I was walking door to door, people would say to me, are you, are you from here? And I would unfortunately say no, and some people would, would look at me like, you know, I was lesser than. And I had to, it's absolutely true. And, and I had to think about it, and I go, you know, Teddy and I weren't born here, but we chose independence, it didn't choose us. And we chose it, and one of the reasons is we had the dream of launching a family here, of launching a married life and, and, you know, spending many years together. Now they're married over 42 years. And, you know, one of the things that we did that for is because the Independent School District is such a good school district, and we knew that our children would all get a great education here. And so I think that's part of it. And we need to, I think we as a city need to keep our end of the, of the bargain and really make an investment in our city. I may get in trouble with Subway by using their terms, but this city needs a refresh and a restart. When you compare us to other cities, when you compare us to Blue Springs, when you compare us to Lee Summit, our infrastructure is not as, as robust as theirs. And we need this kind of investment to make an impact in our city going forward. We, we need an absolute refresh and a restart and make an investment in our city. And Teddy and I came here and we've invested in this city for 42 years with our family and things like that, and I'm asking everyone here to launch your dream of what you see this city doing next. And, and I think our dream of this city is to launch us into that next generation that we can in fact make an impact on our city. So I'm incredibly excited about it. I, I don't think I've been this excited about our, our city since you started bringing this plan out. And, and as I, we talk to folks, we just get, you know, there's been some things that say, hey, you've got to fix this or work on that. And that feedback's important, and we make sure that we really zone in on getting those voters to approve this plan because it'll make truly a generational difference and it'll give us a true refresh and restart and to help us launch our dream and what we want this city to be in the next, in the near future. So anyway, with that being said, I just want to say, thank you very much. So, great job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate those.
You bet. With the wish of the council, we're at an hour 22, 25 into the session. Would it be okay to take a five-minute recess? Is that good? Let's take a five-minute recess, we'll come back at 7:27. All right, Mr. City Manager, if you can lead us on the next discussion on the strategic studies for IPL.
And I think in the interest of time, I'll just turn it right over to IPL Director Jim Nail.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Just a very quick recap. The strategic studies, over the past few years, consultants have provided a number of different studies and plans. In 2019, the decision was made to retire the Blue Valley Plant. Subsequent to that, last January, the council directed the city manager to evaluate and make recommendations on the eventual retirement of combustion turbines. More recently, we've looked at what is the possibility of continued ownership of the utility. In April, April 5th of this year, we were directed to initiate a process to evaluate those options, look at the future ownership, governance, and also the, what the long-term investments would be required for the utility. Two different studies were part of that. One, what's the impact of possibly divesting the city of, of the utility? And two, with continued ownership, what does that look like on a long-term basis for the city? Just last, just a couple of weeks ago, the decision was made to revise that and look at just bringing in DKMT to perform both studies and to make sure that we did that in a way that still maintained the independence of thought of those and that the two didn't influence each other. Used two teams, but to look at, responsibly look at areas where a, a common data collection would, would be most efficient. DKMT has come back to us with a proposal. They include that as the basis of the study. Also include a third-party monitor that they would bring on board, who would be specifically assigned to look at the, the two processes and make sure that they are, maintain independence. The cost-benefit analysis part of that looks at impact to the city if they were to sell the utility. There's a lot of different moving parts and pieces to that. I can talk to you in general terms, but DKMT would do a deep dive into that to, to give you really truly an eyes wide open, this is what it would mean if you were to take that step. Not just to the city and the general fund, but to the ratepayers as well. Continued ownership, looking at that, it's, it's not uncommon for utilities to do a, a strategic plan or a master plan every five years or so. Our last one was done in 2018, 2019, so we're due. But we need to look at not just generation, which is the typical focus of those master plans, but our system overall. We've been here for a long time. We have put a lot of effort into our transmission and distribution system, as is, you see from our, our continued recognition by APPA for reliability. We have a good system, but what does it mean to maintain that over the long term? So we would look at a 20-year revenue requirement, look at all source capital and O and M strategy, technology solutions, implementation strategies, all that would be part of this, this study. In the proposal, DKMT's provided a detailed timeline and a breakdown of what each of those pieces would cost. The report's targeted to, for final delivery in July of '24, at a cost of $459,683. Just to put that in perspective, the last master plan by itself, which was five years ago, was around the $350,000 mark. So this is, this is in line with those kind of expectations. DKMT, we've worked with them previously. Don Harker is the founder of DKMT. He's got a collection of, of people with decades of experience in consulting with municipalities and utilities. He's here tonight to answer your questions and to give you assurance that, that they're ready to do the job. And with that, I will turn it over to Don.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, you requested that you can engage in Q and As so you can get some assurance that we can do both studies independently. I can just tell you a little bit about our team and how we intend to do that. As Jim alluded to, we've retained Mr. Enrique Macalio, who's the former chief economist from the Wisconsin Public Service Commission. He's also been an international banker, and prior to that, he was a director of finance in Alliance Energy Company. Given his strong economic background and strong reputation in the finance area, he is going to test in the finance area, he is going to test both our analysis for bias and act as a third-party monitor to oversee both analysis. I will be leading the cost-benefit analysis and determining what is the value of IPL to the city of Independence, and that can be considered to be a, a break-even number. You will not hear us recommend the sale of IPL, because that is farther down the road. You will have a number to use in negotiations, a number to contemplate, a number for the community to use, depending, should we disclose that number publicly. But the ultimate sale decision, if you decided to go down that path, is finding a willing buyer and what would their terms be. The cost-ben, the strategic plan is being led by my colleague, Heather Bailey. She's been in public power for over 40 years. Most recently, she led studies for the city of Boulder as they attempted to take over and municipalize the investor-owned utility that was serving the city of Boulder, Colorado. We think, the rest of the team members have many decades of experience in the electric and public power industry. We have three more team members, Mr. Chris Greer, he's been managing director of Capgemini. He's been a finance and risk analysis person. He'll be involved in both analysis, but because we have the separation of team leadership, we do not think that's a problem. We also have Mr. Ralph Sombrera, who has been the former head of regulatory for Black and Beach Consulting, and then Mr. Dan Stathos, who's worked with us previously, will look at IT and shared workforce costs. We've also retained the services of Bar Engineering, who have done similar studies for utility valuation purposes, both for the city of Boulder and numerous other cities. They'll also be working with us on the city of San Francisco. So with that as a brief introduction, I'm willing to take, ready to take any of your questions on the effort.
Please proceed.
I thank you. Reviewing proposals helps very much in, in crystallizing what we think your approach will be. I appreciate the skill and talent of the team that you've brought together to do this. I especially am grateful that you brought people with good finance background to be able to look at what is both the valuation that we have and thinking about both risk and reward for future investments in what is a really volatile environment. Very difficult to make some of these long-term bets. And I know that you also will be thinking about what does that spectrum of energy opportunity look like for a utility like ours from renewable to combustible. One thing I did not see, and perhaps this may be a question for Mr. Walker, is treatment of alternate governance structures. Right now, our governance structure for IPL as it exists is that we have an advisory utility board that then reports up to this body here, and we make final decisions. That's certainly not the only governance structure out there. Springfield is a very different one. Just trying to understand what our options are so that we can both look at options and see where we can make the best decisions going forward, because it's not just money, it's also how you manage the operation. So don't know who that question goes to.
I'd be happy to address that. I think that is something that we can certainly make sure offline that we include in DKMT's scope and that we, we get that memorialized and appropriately compensated for that portion of the work, because we know the council's priority on understanding that aspect of this operation as well.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Anyone else have other further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
What does DKMT stand for?
That is the initials of my children.
You know, I've always wondered, and you know, you're here, and I was like, what a better time to ask, right? Where's your company located? I'm sorry. Where's your company located?
Oh, we're located in Allentown, Pennsylvania.
Okay.
About an hour north of Philadelphia. We've been there for the last four years. Prior to that, we were in Illinois. We've been in existence since 2014. Prior to that, I worked for 15 years for a large consulting company and, and located in Illinois.
Have you did studies like this before?
Yes, I led studies for the Department of the Navy. At the time of, if you remember, Enron, the Department of Defense had the idea that it would be good to privatize all the utility systems within the Department of Defense. I led the studies for the Department of the Navy and the Marine Corps in California, Nevada, and Arizona. We looked at approximately 200 utility distribution systems for electric, gas, water, wastewater, steam, compressed air, deciding whether or not it made sense to economically privatize them and qualitatively, if the level of service would exceed that, customers were currently experiencing.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else have other further questions? Please proceed.
I'm sorry, Don. I don't mean to call you Don. What's your last name, sir?
Harker, H-A-R-K.
Harker, Mr. Harker. Thank you.
You can call me Don.
Well.
I've been called much worse.
And I, by, by people, by people you like a lot better. I understand that. And I sure appreciate you being here, and I sure appreciate your willingness to take on both sides of this study. Now, that is the biggest point of contention for me, because it is crucial that the residents of this town and the ratepayers have faith that each side has done their absolute best, working with the same set of facts and data, to make the best case possible.
Oh, I, I, I agree, and we pointed out in our proposal, is that there are many common denominators between both analysis.
Sure.
Discount rates, value of the system, what's your capital plan. And those common facts need to be grounded in both analysis. The...
Agreed. Yeah. No, I agree completely, and it only makes sense. That way, if one of them's off or an assumption's off, at least everybody's working with the same number, you know? I, I totally get that. And I, and I appreciate the economy and the efficiency of it. I really do. The people of this town are simultaneously in love with their utility and in hate with their utility. And for good, for good reason, sometimes, right, for both. They, IPL and Mr. Nail does a wonderful, wonderful job. And I tell you, power outages do not last long here, even with power lines above ground and trees everywhere. Sometimes it's a little expensive. We don't have AMI. We've had, we've struggled with generation, as both are now. Power plants are shut down. It's interesting, Mr. Director Nail pointed out that it's been a while since our last study. I was talking to Mr. Walker the other day, and, you know, IPL opened in 1901, and Blue Valley went on, or Blue Valley Power Plant went online in 66...
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight. About another 60 years, and here we are, talking about it again. I hadn't even really thought about it quite like that. But this is important to us. Now, it's also important that you don't make a recommendation, right?
Right.
That's not part of this. You don't, frankly, any of us could weigh in individually if we want. I'm not going to, but it's really, this is designed and intended for be, to be a chance for the ratepayers to have both cases laid out and then make a choice, whatever they feel like they would like for their power company moving forward.
I agree 100%.
I appreciate that. We will expect and need, at the end of these studies, some ability to be available to the community, and to be able to explain some of these concepts, because they will be highly technical, some of them, in pretty simple terms. I don't know how much of that's been considered as a part of your bid. Mr. Walker, have you discussed that with these folks? The communications portion of this and the interaction with the community that's going to be necessary, the learning portion?
Not with this team, and, and here's why.
Okay.
Based on the direction that, that you guys have given, we are trying to create those firewalls between the different portions of this project. So we are working on lining up a different mechanism and, and team, I shouldn't call them a mechanism, but a project team, to deliver on the communications portion of this assignment, so that we have those separations between the various aspects of, of the project.
Well, I apologize then. You won't have to be here for months in a row at the farmer's market.
I mean, I think we want Don and his team to certainly be, you know, we don't want them to be the man behind the curtain. We want the community to know, here's who has done this work, and certainly stand for questions if, if the community needs that. But in terms of organizing these public meetings and facilitating them and dissemination of information, we, we want, we thought it would be more advantageous to have that burden placed on a different entity. But that doesn't mean...
No, I understand.
They write their reports and, and disappear.
Disappear.
Correct, sir.
Understood.
In, in our proposal, we've included time to support this third-party entity by supplying them information and translating it into mass communications for the public. We also have in our proposal the formation of a strategic planning task force on the strategic planning side. We, we recommend five to seven people from the council, from the PUAB, from the community, who will articulate what the community's aspirations are for IPL in the future. So there'll also be that engagement that can be used as an educational effort.
That's excellent. I, that's fantastic, actually. I think that's a wonderful idea. That is wonderful. Couple high points that don't need to be mentioned, and I don't want to get into the weeds, but I can't help myself. So we have a couple of generation contracts that are a little bit long in length. You're probably familiar with them. Those will be considered on both sides.
Oh, yes.
Okay. And it's my understanding that sometimes power companies keep transmission and distribution, or that sometimes, you know, there are different organizational tools that you can use to, you know, maintain the utility. Will that, that will be considered?
We will articulate options for, I mean, there's everything from what's called the LABA model, where the utility has, owns the assets and they hire someone to operate and maintain them, to the, you know, fully vested municipal utility where they own everything. There's, there's many options in between. We will, we will look at those to the most practical extent possible, but, you know, the main mission is cost-benefit analysis, what is the value of IPL to the community, and strategic analysis, what is...
What do you do going forward?
Going forward. As part of the governance area, we could look at options and articulate those for possible consideration.
I'd be interested in that. One more thing. How do you, in these days, we hear, and this is just based on news reports, so whatever that's worth, but certainly the energy generation climate is, climate is changing. So this question isn't worth much, but how do you plan for that?
Well, we, in, in the financial analysis, there's a risk component, where you take the range of possible values for different inputs. In this case, the price of power, the type of power, et cetera. There's also a unique opportunity in the, in the energy market right now with incentives put in by the Inflation Reduction Act and, and things like that.
Right.
That will be considered as part of the analysis.
Perfect. One last question. Your third-party intermediary, his qualifications that were listed are impressive. Will we get to meet him, or is he going to work all remotely? How, how will his work take place, practically speaking, and then?
He will be a member, he will engage in our team meetings. He will engage in the, the data analysis that we gather from the city. If you want to talk to him in person, he will be here.
I would, I would at some point, at least throughout the process, at some point, when it's convenient or makes sense, it would be nice to have him available. I'm, I'm not looking to be his boss or anything like that, and we shouldn't be, but, and certainly at the end, to have him explain how his process went would be, I think, very valuable. Thank you so much for being here, and appreciate you doing both sides.
So, Don, I'll, I'll weigh in here and just say, as has been said already, thank you for being here, and thank you for the, the care you've given to address our concerns about both sides of, of the question. I guess I just kind of, and, and most of my questions have already been asked, but I guess I just kind of want to make sure I'm understanding on the, on the, the cost side of things, will you be able to, on that analysis, will you be able to factor in all the pieces of the puzzle, like the retirement systems and, and all of that? Just want to make sure that all of that is taken into account. And then on the other side of the coin, I think Councilmember Hobart already asked relative to other types of power and things of that nature, but I'm really anxious to see what you're able to do and what you're able to, you know, rec, say that, that to make Independence Power and Light viable entity for the next 50 years or whatever that timeframe is, that here's what needs to happen. And, and so that we have a blueprint essentially that we can begin to follow and take to the voters. Because like Councilman Perkins said, you know, this will be a generational decision that we make as a city. And, and so I really appreciate the, the, I've, I've, I've looked through your proposal, and I really appreciate that. I, you know, from my perspective, none of us up here understand the power industry and power, you know, that. That's why we need you to do what you're doing. And so at least, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking for everybody else, but I think that's a fair statement, that none of us are power experts, and, and so we appreciate the, the work that you're going to be doing here. So, thank you.
Anyone else? I just got a, and forgive me, I've got a number of questions, Mr. Harker, so, and we may be able to talk offline. You can say, hey, we can talk about that offline, and I'm completely good with that answer. And if you've got a few minutes after this meeting, I'd be happy to spend some time with you, if that's okay. Obviously, you're going to say yes to this question, but I just want to make sure you're going to give us the ability of what impact it's going to make on those local residents, local businesses, and economic development for our city going forward.
Yes.
Okay. And, and I knew the answer was going to be yes, but I had to hear it. So please forgive me on that. And you're also going to give us analysis of our current infrastructure for our utility, and what the plan would be to make this competitive in the future, and what the cost of that would be for our, our individual ratepayers paying for that in the future.
Yes, that's part of the, the capital.
Yes, that's part of the capital plan.
Okay, perfect. I knew you were going to say yes, but I just got to hear it out loud in my, so please forgive me. And then, you're obviously going to talk about the various benefits and drawbacks of privatization on our utility, and also, the impact it's going to make for our users. So, that goes without saying, but that, again, is a yes.
Yeah, there's both a quantitative and a qualitative aspect to both analysis.
And then, you mentioned it earlier, and this may be repetitive, but you talked about there may be potential collaborations or partnerships of municipalities or privatization that we may not have thought about. So, you almost talked about an entire spectrum of choices that would be available to us, and...
Right. Yeah, I mean, as you see in the proposal, there are various options, various questions we will ask as part of the strategic planning process for partnerships, contributions from other communities in building generation. What would that look like, those type of options?
Right. And this question, again, you're going to say yes on it, but what considerations are being given to the impact of our current utility employees, their jobs, and labor agreements? You'll obviously look at all of those things, too.
Yes.
Okay. And then, you'll obviously look at the long-term goals of the utility and how it aligns with our city municipal plan, because you already said, hey, we're going to get people to come together, we're going to talk. What's the need of the city going forward?
Correct. The long-term goals will be articulated as part of the strategic planning process.
Okay. And you'll basically get those and reconfirm those with us prior to getting started?
Yes.
Okay. I knew there was going to be yes on all of those, but I just had to hear it, so please forgive me, and I tried to be quick on that to not take you or a bunch of folks' time. Anybody else have other questions? Mr. City Manager, anything else to wrap up on this one?
This item will be on the council agenda next Monday night for final consideration.
Okay, perfect. Mr. Harker and Mr. Walker, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, absolutely, Mr. Nail, thank you. Okay. Mr. City Manager, I might ask you just to, the resolution on the agenda for council rules and procedures. Should I turn that over to you, or should I turn that over to Mr. Hobart?
Uh, I believe it's Councilmember, Councilmember Fears.
Please forgive me. Because this was your amendments to it, so please forgive me.
So, the, this is an effort to kind of address some of the concerns that I think we all have relative to the last changes that we made with the rules and trying to firm up our process and procedures relative to that. And hopefully, you all received the red line version from City Manager. I know the, for some reason, the red-knot line didn't get originally sent out in the agenda packet. But, just briefly, you know, we added, I, so, this was my, this is all my drafting, but I, and so, I'm certainly open to any other thoughts or discussion about it, but I added a section 5.2 to create an order of business for the study sessions. Study sessions really didn't have it. We didn't have a specific agenda that we were going to follow, and so, this added that. And one of the things I wanted to mention on that is that after council-sponsored items, then we put, I moved the citizens' requests or the citizens' questions to be after the council-sponsored items, because that way, they get to hear our discussion before they have to, you know, before they have an opportunity to talk. It made more sense to me that it be there. Couple of other things that I did, just to clean up the language a little bit relative to the idea that once we, once we publish the agenda, that we won't change that agenda. That agenda, you know, needs to be firm and not be adjusted. We had some issues with that a while back. And so, that's true on both the study session agenda and the regular agenda. And then, the last piece that I included was, let me get down to it. Maybe that, maybe that is the last piece. Oh, just a little more detail about the way that council, that citizens will be able to speak to the council at the study sessions, and just a little comment in there that it's only regarding the council-sponsored items. And so, that, those are the changes that I made in an effort to kind of firm up that process and try to help the citizens understand what we're trying to do relative to the rules.
Any questions or comments on any of that?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
So, I don't have a problem with cleaning them up, it probably needed it. I guess my only issue with it is that the citizens' comments are all the way at the very end, before the adjournment. And if it's tonight's Indian indication, I know a lot of citizens want to come in, they want to speak, and they want to leave. They'd have to sit around for, you know, tonight, two hours before they even to speak. So, I would prefer if we'd actually move the council member-sponsored and the citizens to the top of the agenda, but that's my only issue. Thank you.
Thoughts about that? I'm interested. Okay, we'll make that change.
Anyone else have other thoughts?
My, Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
My only comment is, it's hard to tell exactly all the changes you made, because they, your proposals, because they just look like they're all in the same document. I guess it's just...
You would have received, you would have received another email from City Manager, I asked him to send you a...
With the specific amendments?
With a red line version of that, yeah. Yeah, that, because I noticed that as well, and I said, that wasn't the intent, so...
Okay.
Because, I mean, otherwise, how do you know? It's really hard.
I didn't check that. It's fine, because it's in a full format, and you've explained it, so I appreciate that.
My only, my only question is, for a study session, which is a little bit more relaxed, because we're not taking any votes, do we need the full two-week in advance, or could it be 10 days? I'm just trying to think. I want to be sure that staff has plenty of time to prepare, but it also, we don't have quite as much flexibility when we have the full two weeks in advance.
It's not really two weeks, it's like the Thursday, is it, I'm looking at City Manager, the Thursday before.
It's the Thursday, it's actually, the agenda is published two Fridays prior to the meeting, and that's the same for both regular meetings and study sessions. So, the cutoff is just the day before, which just gives us, you know, a little bit of time to try to get everything together. So, that's, that's what the current timeline is set in the rules.
And I didn't make any changes to that part at all.
Anything else, Councilmember? Anyone else? And this may be a question for you, Mr. Coover. I agree with you in keeping the agenda consistent and not making changes to it, but in the case of an emergency, we still have the rules on there, four members vote to move an item to the agenda or put an item on the agenda because of an emergency, we can certainly do that.
Add a study session?
No, 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 let's say, because he's, are you talking about the agendas that you're making a change for?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
He's talking about, essentially, we can still call technically an emergency meeting to have, to add, or to add an emergency item.
Oh, and bypass, oh, certainly, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks for that clarification. You read my mind, and that's perfect. And that's why we work well together, because many times, you do read my mind, so thank you. But, yeah, I just want to make sure...
Yes, sir, absolutely.
...in reference to that question, that we still have that opportunity, in case it, you know, heaven forbid, we don't have to do it, but in case of emergency, we do.
Yes, you still have that ability.
Okay.
One other question, Mr. Coover, if could. So, that means, in order to move the council-sponsored items and citizen requests up, then we'll have to have an amendment then on next Monday night, is that correct? To what's published, correct?
Yes, we would have to have that amendment, it won't be part of the published agenda, but you would need to have that amendment ready to go, and that would be an amendment to be made at the meeting on Monday, correct?
All right, I'll be prepared to do that.
Okay.
And I think that brings up a great question, and, Mr. Coover, you work with a lot of municipalities on that. With regards to amendments, you know, Robert's rules allows you to bring amendments on at that moment. Should we, though, as a body, agree that the amendments need to be dispersed on a Friday before? Is there any thoughts on that, or is everybody good with amendments being brought up with Robert's rules the day of the event? I mean, I'd like to have some time to look at them and see what the impact would be, but I wanted to get everyone's, everyone's thought on that.
I suppose here's a question, maybe a procedural question to Mr. Coover. So, regarding what Mayor's talking about, I mean, you know, we have to make the amendment at the meeting. We can't make the amendment before that. But, is it, is there a issue if we were to provide the language for an amendment to City Manager, and he could distribute it to all of us, or something? Is that, is that, I mean, that doesn't bypass any sunshine laws or anything, correct?
No, that's not, no, that's not a problem at all.
So, that way, everybody could see it if, so, from a courtesy standpoint, it'd be good to get, hand it out and send it out, but if, you know, we can't really make an amendment ahead of time, because you've got to be in the meeting, so...
Correct. All that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm just saying, as a courtesy, but it doesn't look like there's any, you know, the challenge is, do you make a rule or do you not? And we can talk about that offline, so... Anyone else? Everybody's good? Any other first questions on this? Okay, excellent. That'll bring us to our next item on the, so, Mr. City Manager, do you want to frame this up, or should I just...
Happy to let you run, sir.
All right, we'll do it. As you know, we've talked about this, about the city having a possibility of a video contest to promote our city and our historic sites. I think we have an incredibly robust plethora of items in our city that we could promote and talk about, and a video contest would be a great way to do that. So, I'm just going to frame that up there, but we've got two people, if I could, Mr. City Manager, to ask forward, and Ashley Beard-Fosno, who is the Executive Director of Missouri Humanities. If you could come up, you've worked with other cities on this, and come on up and kind of give us your thoughts, your feelings on it, and...
Sure. Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Ashley Beard-Fosno, I serve as the...
Bring the microphone just a little bit closer to you.
Sorry, how's that? Now, it's falling.
We may have to bring it on a lower level, if you can.
Oh, it'll move, okay.
The very top of it will bend.
Okay, so, did the microphone pick up my gratitude for letting, for you allowing me to speak?
Thank you.
Let the record state, I'm grateful. My name is Ashley Beard-Fosno, I serve as the Executive Director at Missouri Humanities. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We offer, we award grants and provide public programs in humanities-based content across the state of Missouri. And so, that means that we offer public programs in history, literature, philosophy, cultural heritage, and storytelling. Over the last couple of years, we've really found that the most impactful way to tell stories across the state of Missouri is through films and documentaries and short videos. We've hired a cinematographer to join our staff, and in the last year, we were honored to have a couple of our documentaries nominated for Emmys. Over the last couple of years, another one of our popular programs is called Small Town Showcase. So, we allowed small towns across the state of Missouri to self-nominate or nominate their neighbors, and then, we added in the tool of a competition to allow Missourians across the state to vote for which of these little communities should be included in our Small Town Showcase. After we added the competition component, we saw our engagement for this program just balloon. We went from about 37,000 votes for Small Town Showcase to over 600,000 votes. Another one of our areas of focus at Missouri Humanities is promoting cultural heritage tourism. It's one of my favorite topics. I heard you discussing economic development, and I could talk all day about it, but when I ran into Mayor Rowland recently, and he said that there was interest here in the community of Independence to host a film competition, I jumped up and down, because it aligned so well with what we're trying to do at Missouri Humanities. I shared with my Board of Directors this proposal, and they were as enthusiastic as I am, and so, they allocated $10,000 towards this initiative to help launch this film competition here in Independence. Eventually, we would love to take this idea to communities across the state of Missouri and continue this exercise in creating film competitions. It's a great way to tell stories and to really leverage cultural assets that exist. When I mentioned this idea to my board, there, nobody on my board, it lives in this community, but everybody could recognize how important independence is to the state of Missouri, to Missouri's story, and to our statewide history. There's going to be three categories of filmmakers who compete in this competition. High school students, college students, and professional film, filmmakers. And, once those categories are selected, we would love to share the, those films about independence and the cultural assets that exist here on our streaming service called Humanities TV, and really share those stories with our national audience. I'm available to answer any questions that you might have about our work at Missouri Humanities, but I would like to close by expressing, once again, my sincere hope and thanks that Missouri Humanities can partner with the city to make this film competition a success and showcase the phenomenal stories and history that are unique to this community. Thank you.
Any questions?
So, you know I'm just a humongous fan of the Missouri Humanities. You guys do such amazing work, and you have done some of the most beautiful storytelling in the state, so I'm just delighted that you would award the city this opportunity, and we look, really look forward to working with you, so, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else have other questions, comments? Ms. Fosno, polite, thank you very much, great job, appreciate it. We've also got Michael Baxley, Executive Director of the Inglewood Arts, and he's going to come up and kind of give his perspective on it, and he's also got some ideas that he could add to the equation, too, so, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. As Mayor said, I'm Michael Baxley, Executive Director for Inglewood Arts, part of your Community Arts Center. I wanted to speak today just a little bit about the video contest. You know, video and film has been leveraged and used in other cities, and so, looking at those examples and comparing to the plan that the mayor and others have put together, I looked at the Better Cities in Detroit. It's been running successfully for over 10 years. The city of Newport also has a film or video-type contest. And after comparing those to this contest, I actually think that this is truly unique. It's got some aspects of community that these other aspects, these other film festivals don't have, and so, I think this is a beautiful melding of the arts and community together, and promoting the city and building pride. So, thinking about this plan, I just think, of all the different art forms I've seen and opportunities, this one seems truly unique. Inglewood Arts is 100% excited about this and wants to participate and be part of it. I know we've committed to making the actual awards themselves, so it'll be blowing glass film awards, and we're actually, Mayor will be pleased to hear, we're making a prototype this week, so we hope to have something to show. I think with that, it could be used for promotion and other things. And then, lastly, I just want to say and thank the mayor and the city council for embracing the arts. I just wanted to throw out a couple of numbers, I love to throw numbers at folks. But, you know, people hear arts and they go, you know, why should, why should we put so much emphasis or focus on it? But, I was thrilled to see that the Missouri Arts Council just completed its 2022 study of the impact of the arts, and they learned that it's a $1.7 billion industry in Missouri alone. It creates more than 13,000 jobs. So, opportunities like this film festival or video contest, and bringing the arts and video and melding it with community, that just brings more art opportunities to Independence, but that also gets some of that $1.7 billion into Independence as well. So, this is, while this is great for community, it's great for the arts, it's also good for the bottom line, too. So, I think it's a win-win-win all the way around, and we're just thrilled about this, and we hope that this moves forward. So, I'll stop there, unless you guys have any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Baxley, thank you very much, I appreciate it, and I appreciate the ideas you've generated in this, so, great job, so well done.
Thank you.
Excellent. But, anyway, just to kind of close on this and to wrap it up, the Tourism Commission has endorsed this idea. The very first time that they saw it, they voted for it and made the vote. And really, if I can, Ms. Baker, you were a big proponent of it, you spoke very eloquently that day in the commission's meeting. And so, the Tourism Commission has a dream that echoes in the spirit of our great city. A dream that envisions the stories being told and dreams being realized. We dream that people of Independence will embark on a cinematic journey with us. We dream that people of Independence will embark on a cinematic journey with us and tell the tales of our city, the dreams that were born here, the dreams that were launched from our beloved city. And here are a few examples. In the Inglewood Arts, where creativity knows no bounds, what could a filmmaker do with the story of Walt Disney and Independence? Some people know about that, some don't, but I think that is an opportunity to launch a filmmaker's career. Hiram Young, a man who dared to dream for freedom and prosperity, left an indelible mark in our city. He launched thousands of dreams westward expansion from his blacksmith shop. In his best year, he made over 300 wagons, and he employed over 50 to 60 people. He truly was a job creator. And today, we honor those dreams that blossomed from the echo of Hiram Young's hammer, that shaped the future and destiny of our nation in the spirit of Independence. I challenge a filmmaker to launch their career with that dream. Reflecting of the history of our city, there was a humble man who stumbled into an arena of politics named Harry Truman. Little did he know at the time that his dream would simply make, that he would make a living in politics, but ultimately lead to the highest office in our land. Truman's story is one of unexpected dreams and a testament to the unpredictable paths that unfold within our city. His dreams were launched here. A filmmaker could be recognized for recognizing that moment. In the hallways of the Episcopal Church, Trinity Episcopal Church, the dreams of a young married couple intertwined there. Harry and Bess were married with aspirations of modest life together, but they had no idea that the pinnacles of that journey would start there at the Trinity Episcopal Church and would lead to the highest powers of this city, or, excuse me, of this nation. That dream was started and launched here. So today, we invite all of those dreamers out there to help us launch this film contest. And it is our goal with the Tourism Commission, because they are the ones promoting this, and it's their idea, and I want to help promote it and push it, we want to raise $50,000 for contest money. I think that will get some people's attention for the various areas. And since we talked last time, Ashley, we're actually have a fourth category, and we're just looking for people to film something very quickly, almost a TikTok-type of thing, saying, why do I love Independence? You know, 25, 30 seconds, a minute, just something very simply, and we're looking for that. So we've got a variety of categories, and ultimately, at the end, we would love to see something like this at the Inglewood Arts, doing Academy Awards for those high schoolers to be at the Truman Library and have an Academy Awards for maybe the college students there, and for the professionals someplace else, so that we would really bring the entire community together to do this. But I'm excited about the Tourism Commission's excitement about this and wanting to move this idea forward. They've blessed it, and so with that, I will wrap up and be happy to answer any questions. Seeing none, that'll bring us to item number five, Mr. City Manager, and I will let you proceed on that one.
Okay, welcome back. Still Zach Walker, still City Manager. Okay, let me...
Oh, we're gonna be flip about it, are we?
Decorum in the body.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this presentation, it's listed as two different items on the public agenda, but I'm going to consolidate and condense this into one presentation addressing...
And, Mr. City Manager, let me ask this. I mean, to see if I indulge the wishes of the body. You and I talked about this earlier. The hour is 8:20 in the evening. And you shared with me earlier, if it gets a little bit late, we could certainly do this at another time.
It's the will of the council, whatever you guys want to do.
And so I want to, really, I know we're not gonna vote it, but just to see the will of council, would you like to proceed, or would you like to set this off to another time?
I tell you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember McCandless, and Mr. Walker and I discussed this this morning. I love the idea of consolidating many of our committees and commissions. I think it's probably smart, especially since we have a hard time filling positions. I think it might be wise, maybe if we set this over one anyway, and between now and then, if there's a council member or two that might have an interest in sitting down with him or staff, kind of going through these a little bit, they might be able to pare it down without spending a lot of extra time on it. I don't know how Mr. Walker feels about that, but...
I'm good with whatever you guys are feeling.
You want to proceed, or do you want to postpone? Do you want to proceed or postpone?
I like Councilmember Hobart's option of having a conversation to ask some questions and see if we can bring together some recommendations.
I think we might be able to get to some consensus, you know, just generally, and save maybe a bit of time on the back end.
Okay. Very good.
So, yes, I think we should continue it, if that's all right.
Perfectly fine by me.
You mean postpone or continue tonight?
Continue this to the next study session.
Okay. Is that, is that okay? Continue to the next study session, and then have some discussion? That's what I'm hearing? Okay. Very, very good. So that's item number five, and then item number six, that really falls also in this? Is that true?
That's, that's correct.
So if we decide to move on one, we should probably postpone both of them?
I would recommend that, yes, sir.
Okay. And that seems to be will of the council, so we will proceed with that. Since we don't have anything else on the agenda, we'll postpone...
One thing, you have an item on your agenda that says boards and commissions, actually. The Personnel Board has just asked that we make an announcement that there are two vacancies on that group. That is making it hard for that body to have meetings, because they'd have no margin for error with those two vacancies. So in order for them to be functional and be able to process the business of the city, they would just kindly ask that we made that announcement tonight, that anybody that might be interested submit an application with the clerk for those two vacant positions.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And real quick, Mr. Mayor, on that exact item, there's two vacancies, but aren't there a couple of members that are... How many total spots are there on that board? Five?
It's a five-member board.
Yeah, and I heard, I heard there was some trouble getting actual a meeting scheduled because some of the members were not maybe quite available because of...
Yeah, that's, like I said, no margin for error, because anything below three was unable to meet due to lack of a quorum. So just to be able to, in the event somebody fell ill or had travel plans and the group was planning to meet...
What staff member is the representative or the conduit with that committee, Mr. Walker?
Our Human Resources Director.
Maybe, would you mind? Maybe we need a sort of report on that, because we need folks that are... The ones we do have, we need to have them to be able to make sure they can show up regularly and ably. I'm not trying to be cruel, but we, that needs to be a thing, you know?
Maybe take a look at your board and commission composition at our December 11 study session, and we can have that conversation in the interim about kind of what our current vacancy and expired terms are looking like, because I will say, in interest of time, almost half of the appointments in the city are either expired or will be expired by the end of this year, so...
I agree with you. I totally agree.
We've got a lot of work to do, yep.
My concern is specific on the Personnel Board, since they have some heightened responsibilities.
Heightened responsibilities and some important issues coming before them right now.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
No, thank you.
And if I'm correct, Mr. City Manager, that completes our agenda for this evening, and we can adjourn.
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.